Article 22, Commercial Wood Processing Use, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve Article 22 as printed on the screen.
Second.
Motion's been made and second to approve Article 22 as printed on the screen. We have Speaker Stephen Cole.
Hi folks, you sick of me yet? So the purpose for this bylaw is to codify an existing policy with the Carver Fire Department. Presently, this use does exist elsewhere in town on smaller scales as well as for agricultural purposes. However, this bylaw would require an applicant who operates this type of a business to come before us for a site plan review. The primary purpose for that is to ensure that the site for this use is laid out in a safe way. As we know, when there's a smoldering pile of wood chips, those need to be turned over and you need to have some real estate in order to be able to do that. So we're simply requiring or requesting that a certain size parcel, five acres, would be appropriate for this type of a use on a grand commercial scale. It does exempt personal use, so if you cut firewood for personal purposes, you would not be, you know, not be required to fulfill these requirements. It's strictly for businesses that are commercial wood processing centers. And again, to reiterate, this is intended to codify existing Carver Fire Department policies.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. This, when we get to it, it'll require a two-thirds vote. The recommendation from the Board of Selectmen was 5-0, the Planning Board was 4-0. Do we have any debate? Seeing, oh, Mr. Shea.
Yes, thank you, I just have a couple of quick questions here. Is it currently allowed in residential areas?
Well, sir, it is currently allowed in residential areas as a matter of right for personal purposes. So again, we want to clarify that this is for commercial purposes, large-scale industrial purposes even. As of now, technically, because we have a prohibitive bylaw which says unless you can do it, you cannot do it. I would, I would submit to you that because this doesn't exist in our bylaws presently, you technically cannot do it. So we're not only codifying it for safety purposes, but we're making it legitimate business practice.
Then, I would just like to make a motion to remove residential from the usage list because a wood processing plant can be, in any circumstances, can be a rather burdensome on the entire neighborhood.
Indeed, sir, and I would only say also, if you see the, the superscript at the end of "Commercial Wood Processing" there, there's a number 7. That number 7 is a sequential requirement on top of the use regulations for this use. And what that number 7 infers and says is at the bottom there, minimum site of five acres in all districts. So even if it were to exist in a resident district, it would still require five acres.
Right, but the five acres won't contain the smell or the various other issues involved with this. And is that five buildable acres, or is that five acres including wetlands and various other issues?
As that, as I would interpret that, it would be five contiguous acres regardless of wetland status. But there is also bylaws in place, and general bylaws, that require work to be performed outside of a 100-foot buffer of wetlands and conservation space.
Right, alright, thank you then. Then I would like to just make a motion to remove residential from the usage list.
We need that ready.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So we have a motion made and second to remove residential from the usage list. Mr. Shea, do you want to add any further description of that?
Just that this and what's described, and it can be a very invasive, five acres or not, five acres or not, it can be a very invasive pulping, cutting, various other adhesives used, so I just want to protect the people that might have to deal with this. Thank you.
Mr. Belvin?
So, I actually was thinking about putting this amendment in too, to be totally honest. If my neighbor who owns Cranberry Bogs wants to do this, I'm set up high, there's not a lot of tree buffering in between, and he starts running a machine, we're going to be listening to that.
Mr. Belvin?
Yes.
Mr. Shea already made the point of being in close proximity to other residences, so do you have something beyond that?
Okay, well, the noise issue is one, is a big one.
Yep.
For it, alright. And taking it out of here, it says special permit. I do have a question with that, if I could get that answered first, is what does the asterisk mean? It says special permit with an asterisk.
It means with your express permission, Mr. Belvin.
Yes.
I'm kidding, of course. No, asterisk means that a special permit in this case would be afforded, awarded by the Planning Board. If you were to see SP pound sign, that would be special permit by the Select Board. And if you were to see simply SP in the use regulation table, the ZBA is by default the special permit granting authority. So SP would simply be for ZBA.
Thank you for that explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Belvin. So, how are we with the amendment? Mr. Shea, we're going to ask you just to clarify your motion. So, would you agree that you would be changing the RA column where it says SP star to N?
Yes.
Okay. Can we have you just edit your, or are you editing it for him, Mr. Corbo?
Yeah, I'm writing.
Thank you, that saves a lot of time. Okay, so seeing no further motion to the mics, on the amendment to replace SP star under RA on the commercial wood processing line there with N, thusly removing the RA zone from this, this will be a majority vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, well, no, we had discussion on it, so someone had shouted out there, yep. All those opposed?
No.
Okay, the motion passes. Moving back to the original article, any further discussion?
I just want to, in, I grew up in Pembroke and we had chip tech that came in, and they had a huge fire in Pembroke, and it lasted for days. It cost tens, over $10,000 when I talked to the chief, if he could remember that far back, but, super nice guy. But, it cost $10,000 back then. If we have a fire here, and this is really important, that it's dangerous, and we have a property that has tons of wood chips in a residential area, and it's dangerous, and I'd just like the police, the, please, yeah, the fire chief, if you could just speak on how dangerous that these can happen with the wood chips.
Or deputy.
You know, that was part of the presentation. The presentation said that it was dangerous, now that the Fire Department recommended it, so no disrespect. I'm, I'm just going to move this along here, so.
I'd like to speak over that.
Okay, alright. Mr. Weston?
I'm going to take it. Sure.
I, I'd just like to speak on that. I just want to make sure we're clear, because I'm confused right now. If Ms. Milonowski could put up some pictures, these are fires we have in Town of Carver that we've been to and we respond to, and these are lodged debris piles, and some of these are in residential areas. And I'm very concerned right now with the amendment that was just made, if we just lost our enforcement power to try to remove this stuff. And that, that was our only goal here, was to take what's already enforced at a Planning Board level, that we put regulations on new businesses, and our new businesses cooperate. But these are the problems that you see right there, are residential areas, where we have lodged debris piles that are going to catch fire, and we've been through it. So, I'd like to ask Town Council to make sure that we have the power in the residential area that the amendment that we just made, so that's, that's a little bit confusing for me.
I, I would agree. My only concern was the ability to actually put a commercial plant in a residential zone. That was my issue. I firmly support any fire safety issues that the chief brings up.
So you withdraw your motion? Well, it's already been voted in, so we have to.
Mr. Moderator, could you reconsider the vote?
Hold on one moment. So, when they set this to null, it just basically said that you can't do it in residential agriculture, even with a special permit, right?
Yes.
Can I, can I just address this before we?
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Corbo would like to address.
Thank you. Through, through you, Mr. Moderator, to the chief. So this, this particular article is a zoning bylaw. It sets up what uses are allowed, what uses aren't allowed. There are other mechanisms for taking enforcement action against dangerous and nuisance properties. And whether this bylaw is passed or not, I'd be happy to work with you on those properties in particular. But in my opinion, there's nothing in, in this action that would prevent you from being able to, to take enforcement actions for public safety purposes.
Mr. Moderator, through you, Jesse Boyle, 5 Ward Street, Assistant Deputy Fire Chief. Just to play off of what Mr. Corbo said, this isn't an intent to allow more use, it's actually an intent just to be able to regulate what's currently out there or what's coming. That's basically what this is about, not allowing more, but restricting what's there or could be coming.
Seeing no further motion to the mics, on Article 22, Commercial Wood Processing Use, and the motion to move that the town amend the Town of Carver zoning bylaw to regulate commercial wood processing operations as set forth in Article 22 of the warrant, this requires a two-thirds vote, was recommended by the Board of Selectmen 5-0 and the Planning Board 4-0. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Article 23, Expansion of Solar Regulations, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve Article 23 as printed on the screen.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve Article 23 as printed on the screen. On this article, we have presentation from?
Hello, this is Bruce Mackey.
Okay, Bruce Mackey.
9 Thatcher Street, Planning Board Chair. So we have the expansion of the solar regulations.
Bruce, can you speak into the microphone?
Get real close.
Alright, I'll get close, I'll bend down. Okay, this matter was studied by the Economic Development Task Force, and I'll just go through some points here. The first is it preserves the existing bylaw. Second, all solar projects will still require 100% screening from all lot lines. Third is all solar projects will still require a 200-foot setback. And this bylaw allows the Planning Board to reduce the setbacks if and a butter signs an affidavit allowing less setback near their lot line. So just to repeat that, this bylaw allows the Planning Board to reduce the setbacks if and a butter signs an affidavit allowing less setbacks near their lot line. And with the signed affidavit, the applicant may request the Planning Board reduce the setback to 50 feet. And if a solar project transcends two contiguous properties that are, that are in a mutual ownership, then setbacks may be reduced to 12 and 1/2 feet either side of the lot line, so that's 25 feet apart. I don't know if there's any questions?
Well, we'll move, we'll move on to the debate. Mr. Ward?
Dick Ward, 20 West Street, Cranberry Grower, small Cranberry Grower. I put in five acres of solar. With the present bylaw requiring 200 feet from my lot lines to where anything from, would be part of the solar project, it would have taken almost the whole 50 acres, because you're going 200 feet on all boundaries. So if I am next to another Cranberry Grower or another person that wanted to put solar, they have to be 200 feet from the property line, as well as I do. So it's a 400-foot area or buffer zone presently required by our bylaw. Now, I, I am surrounded by three major landowners, the junkyard, and, and if we agreed that they, that I could put the pro, the solar project closer to the line than they did, then that would give me some relief. The sportsman's club is behind me, and I have another neighbor that I have never had any complaints from, that's the cemetery. And so, what we're asking for, this would not involve my neighbors. I want to respect my neighbors with the solar, the present one I have, and I would invite anybody here to come down and see. But it's set way back so that none of my neighbors can even see it, or you can't see it from West Street. But, but there may be a need, in the industry, we are having a tough time. And my wife and I had to go forward with this to actually, in the long term, stay on this property, because the Cranberries aren't paying the bills. So the, the solar is helping us a great deal at this point. So, I guess I hope I've covered it. My light didn't go on yet?
No, you're still good. Thank you. Yeah, on my right.
Hi, Jen Bogart, 116 Cranberry Road. I am on the Planning Board, but I am not speaking on behalf of the Planning Board tonight. I would like to make a motion to add some language.
Just go ahead and make the motion, so we can begin the debate, and then we'll take the, yeah, alright.
Alright, my motion is to add language, so it reads, provided standard setbacks and screening requirements are waived in writing by all direct abutters, here's my addition, while taking all nearby properties into consideration in a residential agricultural RA zoning district.
Holy moly.
So I'm just adding the wording, while taking all nearby properties into consideration.
So we have a motion made and seconded.
Someone who can see it, there's been something that came before us, where he wasn't a direct abutter, like there was a problem, because there was an easement, but he can see it, because it was just a utility easement. So they said, oh, he's not a butter, doesn't matter. Yeah, he was one of the, they.
I know. I just want the chance to explain myself. Yeah.
Alright, so we, we have a motion made and seconded to change the language in 1A, so that it will read, amend section, amend section 3580 dot 25 dot 1, to allow reduced setbacks for large-scale ground-mounted solar voltaic installations to a minimum of 50 feet, provided standard setbacks, hold on, and screening requirements are waived in writing by all direct abutters, while taking all nearby properties into consideration in a residential agricultural zoning district, within a residential agricultural zoning district must be on file with the Planning Board and referenced in a special permit decision. Do I have, do you want to further explain?
Yeah, I'm just a chance to explain. This stems from, we've had projects come before us, one in particular, where there was several residents who had a view of a project, but they were not direct abutters. And it was said multiple times, well, you know, we try to think of everyone, but they're not a direct abutter, so it's not in the bylaw, so, oh well. So I just want to make it explicit that everybody nearby is just taken into consideration. I think getting every, all of the abutters in writing is fantastic, but I think it should be explicit that we just have to consider everybody else, and can't just dismiss everybody else. I just want to protect everybody's visuals. I think the intent is great. I would just like stronger protection for the residents.
Thank you, Ms. Bogart. Mr. Germaine?
I'm not trying to pick on Jen. What's nearby, that's, it's too vague. We have a reason, there's a reason why we have abutters. There's a reason why we have, I got a notice today from Edenville, within 100 feet. There's a reason why it's set that way. If we want it to be 500 feet, then we should change the bylaw and make it 500 feet. If we want it to be a quarter of a mile, we can do that, but we can't just take a number and then say, in addition to nearby, because there's no definition for nearby. What if you look through the trees at the right angle and you can see that property, but you weren't one of the nearby people? So it just, I think it's too ambiguous. I know your intent is great. I don't disagree with that at all, but the wording won't work. It's unenforceable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Germaine. On the, seeing no additional motion to the mics, on the amendment to replace the language in the article, unless, unless there's any objections, I won't read it again, is, alright. So to change the article as formerly stated, this require a majority vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The amendment fails. Moving back to the discussion on Article 23, the main motion. Any additional debate? Seeing no motion to the mic, on Article 23, Expansion of Solar Regulations, and the proposed motion moving that the town vote to amend section 3580, the town zoning bylaw relative to large-scale ground-mounted solar voltaic installations that's set forth in Article 23 of the warrant, requires a two-thirds vote, and the recommendation from the Board of Selectmen was 5-0 and the Planning Board was 3-1. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The motion carries by two-thirds vote. Article 24, Dual Use Solar, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve Article 24 as written on the screen.
Second.
I have a motion and seconded to approve Article 24, Dual Use Solar, as shown on the screen. I have a presentation from Mr. Mackey.
Yes, the State Department of Agriculture, Energy and Environmental Protection created regulations and incentives for the large ground, large solar ground-mounted photovoltaic installation to operate on active Cranberry Bogs. This matter was studied by the Economic Development Task Force, and the language was unanimously endorsed. So this creates a new solar bylaw, and all solar projects will still require 100% screening from all lot lines. All solar projects will still require a 200-foot setback. This bylaw allows the Planning Board to reduce the setbacks if and a butter signs an affidavit allowing less setbacks near their lot line. With the signed affidavit, the applicant may request the Planning Board reduce setbacks to 25 feet. If a solar project transcends two contiguous properties that are in mutual ownership, then setbacks may be reduced to 12 and 1/2 feet on each lot line.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey. We'll now go to debate. Seeing no motion to the mic, this article requires a two-thirds vote. Recommendation by the Board of Selectmen is 5-0, but the Planning Board is 3-1. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries by two-thirds vote. Moving on to Article 25, Solar, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve Article 25 as printed, printed on the screen.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Article 25 Solar as printed on the screen. I have a presentation by Mr. Mackey.
Alright, Article 25 is Use Regulation Correction. It is written in the bylaw that the Planning Board is the special permit granting authority for the large-scale solar installations, but it's not indicated on the chart. So we're just adding an asterisk, and which was left out.
Thank you for the presentation. Seeing no motion to the mics, this will require a two-thirds vote. Recommendation of the Board of Selectmen is 5-0, Planning Board is 3-1. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries by two-thirds vote. Article 26, Wetland Bylaw Changes, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve Article 26 as printed on the screen.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve Article 26 as printed on the screen. I have a presentation from Mr. Savory Moore.
Hi, I'm Savory Moore, live at 12 South Main Street. I'm the Vice Chair of the Carver Conservation Commission. I only have one page and it's double-spaced. As a rural farming community and residential community that draws all its water from the ground, protecting the ecosystem in and around wetlands and open water is of the utmost importance to the health and safety of Carver's residents, businesses, and farms. This article was developed by the Conservation Commission in order to bring Carver's wetlands bylaw more in law, in line with state law, and to clarify some previously vague language in order to help builders and residents make informed decisions, to reduce pollutants that contaminate our lakes, ponds, and streams, and to protect the aquifers upon which we all rely. The biggest change is strengthening the protections into the current 65-foot buffer zone surrounding wetlands and open water. The vegetation in this buffer zone is extremely important for the removal of harmful chemicals and pollutants from surface water before it reaches our waterways and aquifers. The revised bylaw will now prohibit any human activity within the 65-foot buffer zone without a variance, and will require the applicant to provide proof of hardship or a safety issue in order to receive that variance. The revised bylaw does not affect any of the exemptions currently enjoyed by the agricultural community, and merely asks that the Carver Conservation Agent be made aware beforehand of any such work being done in order for the agent to be able to answer any queries that may be made by the general public. The other changes in the bylaw are for the most part clerical, and include the addition of preventing invasive species as an area of Conservation Commission supervision, a revised fee structure for permits, a site plan checklist, updating the definitions of alter and hardship variance, and adding the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act definition of vista pruning. The Conservation Commission believes that enacting this revised bylaw is an important step toward helping protect the water resources in Carver that are so important to us all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, we'll open it up for debate. Mr. Belvin?
I just want to make this clear, in this it says, you can't do anything with 100 and, 100 feet of any bordering wetlands, correct? That's, that's the intent, is that you can't do anything within 100 feet?
Mr. Moore?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Our current wetlands bylaws requires a variance within 65 feet for a structure or an impervious surface. This expands that to do, to include any kind of human activity within that 65-foot buffer that already exists.
Agriculture is exempt from this?
Every, every exemption that agricultural now enjoys is exactly the same.
They still get that?
No changes at all.
Okay, and then, because I am, I'm right next to a bog, in a wetland, does this include if you're going to plant some bushes on your property to make it look nicer or anything? Do you still have to go to conservation for that, alright, and go through the whole process when you want to plant a tree or whatnot within this 100-feet buffer?
As of right now, anything with 100 feet, by Massachusetts law, you have to go to conservation. This is just, this now just requires a hardship variance with, if you're in the 65 feet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. On my left.
Yeah, Mark Weston, 171 Main Street. You said agriculture was exempt, but there was kind of, you said, I thought you said we would have to notify the planning, the conservation, if we were doing anything next to?
Yes, that is what I said.
Yes, that is what I said, and currently, that is what is required. It just isn't really happening a lot now.
So every time, excuse me, through the moderator, every time I want to clean a canal, go into my pump house, or I want to rebuild around my pump house, I have to notify conservation that I'm doing it?
No, because you're not altering something. If you are going to, if you're going to create a road next to a canal, you would have to notice, notify the conservation agent. The only reason that this was put in is because if, if someone is doing something that the conservation agent is not aware of, and a citizen contacts the conservation agent, then the Conservation Commission has to make a site visit to determine what's going on. If the conservation agent knows beforehand what's going on, the conservation agent can address that concerned citizen's query, and, and nothing else has to be done after that.
And the Conservation Commission is going to make themselves aware, I'm available 24 hours a day, whatever. I mean, we work sometimes 24 hours a day, and you have problems where you have to do things on the fly?
If you, if you look at Appendix N in the town warrant, you'll see that the bylaw actually states that we would like to be notified beforehand or as soon after as possible. It does not have to be done precisely beforehand, but we'd like to know about it before we get a phone call from someone saying, "Hey, they're tearing down the woods next to my house."
It's, I, it's, your intentions is probably great, because of the water and everything else, but I think you might be opening up a can of worms here with the thousands of acres of cranberry bogs and cranberry growers in this town, where everything by the law, and if you want to be lawful citizen, we have to call you every time. You are going to be overloaded with a lot of people calling, saying, "I'm doing this, I'm doing that," and it could be, take a lot of time. I don't know if it'll work.
Well, I hope, hopefully, we'll get to see that, but I mean, right now, it's the, the opposite is that we get called and we have to go out and look.
Ms. Stevens?
So through you, Mr. Moderator, I have a question for Mr. Moore that might answer Mr. Weston's concern. So currently, in the Wetlands Protection Act Regulations, 310 CMR, 10.04, those are the agricultural exemptions. And what I'm hearing is that, from Mr. Weston, is that every time they go to chop down maple trees within 100 feet of their bogs, they're going to dredge a ditch, they have to call you guys. But what I think your intention is, and I want to be clear, is that, no, it's if they're putting a new roadway in, or if they're doing something that's not an agriculturally exempt activity. So I just, I want a clarification. Do they call you every time they're cleaning the ditch, or not?
No, they do not call every time they're cleaning the ditch. They call if they're doing something that is, is altering property that is in a current state and making it to a different state. Cleaning a ditch is taking something that's existing and just basically maintenance to it.
Well, it's also exempt.
Yes.
Mr. Belvin?
Around my neigh, my house, whatever, we have a river, a muddy river, and the bog owner, and we've actually had people go out there and clean out those rivers for the state, or I, we paid somebody to do them, but there's an area that it grows very quickly. And we get a lot of trees up in that area, and they fall, end up falling down in the river, and it backs it all up and creates a problem there. And one day, I came in and they clean cutted the whole thing. I really don't have a problem with it, okay? Because it actually looks kind of nicer now around the roadway. In that case, will they have to go before or call you that they're going to do this type of a, an operation? Just really, it's to maintain that waterway, that they're going to get some water?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, that would fall under the safety issue part of, of the hardship variance.
Okay, so they don't have to notify you to do that?
They do have to notify us, but you would be allowed to do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Belvin. On my left?
Yes, Gary Weston, 34 Main Street, Carver. I'm concerned about this, from what you're saying, anything within 65 feet, any homeowner that's close to the wetlands, 65 feet, they could do nothing with it? No use?
Not unless they have a hardship variance.
And what is that?
It is, it is defined in, in the Appendix N. I can go grab it if you'd like and read it.
Well, is it an easy thing to get, or is it a? I, I just think you're making, anyone that lives near a wetland, you're going to make it tough on them. That's all.
Well, in, in a sense, that's the purpose of the bylaw, is to protect the wetlands, not to allow someone to have a lawn, in effect.
I just think we're being too restrictive with ourselves.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Seeing no further motion to the mics, on Art, oh, Mr. Bentley?
So I have a question through you, Mr. Moderator. I, my house is about 100 feet from Wenton Pond, and my deck is within 65 feet of Wenton Pond. If I want to take down a single tree, what I'm hearing is that I've got a, between, between my deck and the pond, I have to talk to the Conservation Commission to be able to do that?
Mr. Moore?
Under current bylaws, the way they are right now, the answer is yes. Under the new bylaw, the answer would still be yes.
Am I right?
Scott Diagenes, 27 Johns Pond Road. Just to clarify, though, if your deck's within 65 feet, you wouldn't be able to use it anymore, correct?
No, that is not true. No. If you read the appendix, this, this bylaw affects anything that, any project that is done after the bylaw has taken effect. Anything currently existing is grandfathered in, and that is in the appendix, in the bylaw.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, seeing no further motion to the mic, on Article 26, wetland bylaw changes, on the motion, I move that the town vote to amend Section 9.2 of the town Carver Wetlands bylaw, set forth in Article 26, Appendix N of the warrant. Majority vote required on this. Recommendation from the Board of Selectment was 4-2-1, and Conservation Commission, 5-0. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Let's, let's show the cards. All those in favor, just put a card up in the air. Okay, put your cards down. All those opposed, put a card up in the air? Okay, the motion fails. Oh, oh, just there's a difference. Not an amendment. What's that? In the motion, okay. Okay, moving on to Article 27, non-medical marijuana overlay district, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve Article 27 as amended on the screen.
Second.
Have a motion made and seconded to approve Article 27, non-medical marijuana overlay district, as shown on the screen. Please note that there are some differences that are going to be displayed on the screen here from what is in the warrant. Keep in mind that it is the, the motion that, that sort of controls those differences there, so it's not necessarily, you know, that we've, you know, made changes to the warrant itself, but we are making changes to the, the language of the motion. So I have a presentation from Mr. Stephen Cole.
Well, folks, I'm glad we finally have an issue that's not controversial, right? So the purpose for this article is to restrict the locations that retail medical marijuana, non-medical marijuana will be allowed in town. Presently, the state laws ultimately leave us very little creative controls. Nonetheless, this, this chart in front of you identifies the maps and lots where we are suggesting that this would be or should be allowed. Largely segmented in the northern part of town, say, north of Silo Marketplace, you'll see the upper right, smaller tri, well, that's the lower left, yep. That one there that's being highlighted by Mr. Melanowski is the South Carver Overlay District that follows Route 58 from Erickson's Ice Cream down to the town line in Wareham. The northern one, that's a little smaller there, that follows Route 58 north of Silo Marketplace where Abishon and Dunkin' Donuts is, north right to the Plimpton Line on both sides of the highway. You can see the, the graphic of North Carver, and that is a graphic of South Carver. It shows you that there's very, in fact, there's almost no residential representation down there. There was a gentleman who came to the Planning Board Public Hearing, who lives in South Carver, who asked that his property be removed. The Planning Board granted that request, and so all but two parcels in South Carver on the town line are included in the overlay. The purpose for the article also limits the number of retail licenses that are available. Mr. Corbo, I believe they cap it at, the state allows us to cap it at 20% of the number of liquor licenses that we have in town. Is that, I believe that's correct?
That, that's correct, unless you go to a ballot vote.
Right. So, so folks, it is, it is not possible for us to ban this use in town, since it did pass a binding referendum a number of years ago. So I believe that this is perhaps the most conservative locations that we could provide for this use, as well as keeping some of the traffic flows that we see some other towns permeating our downtown.
Point of order?
Could we just have clarification on this, on the state law, where you said that the state allows us to cap it at 20%?
This isn't a point of order.
Okay.
This is a question, and you had someone in front of you.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
So that's just normal debate.
My bad.
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Belvin?
The change is, what were the changes from what we have here to what was put up there?
Mr. Moderator, through you, that is to correct a Scrivener's error, and frankly, I, I will die on that hill. That was my error. I included those particular parcels that you see there as 4A, 4B, 4C, and 5, as well as 4, on Map 25. Those parcels actually exist on Assessor's Map 24.
Okay. Is the urban renewal area included in this? The Park Street properties?
The urban renewal area is included in a portion of that overlay district, that's correct. There was a number of months ago, Mr. Belvin, where the preferred developer for that site came and conducted a joint meeting with the North Carver Water District and the RDA, and that gentleman indicated that he would have very few qualms about having that use impacting that, that development.
So is, is the whole, is the whole Park Street area included in this, or just parts of it?
Parks, oh, you're, yes, part, yes, Park Street, the, the paper street that goes onto the site there. It's actually Montello, so it's the parcels that are along Montello.
Along Montello.
Not into Park.
Not in Park, the Park, Park Ave, I'm sorry, it's Park Ave, that comes in, where there's a lot on the right, and then there's the bigger lots in the back there that Mr. McLaughlin owns. I think he actually owns that other one, too, he just bought, that's right. So he owns all of that. So either side of Park Ave that comes in, is that included? Yes or no?
You know, Mr. Belvin, frankly, I don't recall which map and lot that is, and I apologize for that. Mr. Melanowski, do we have a graphic to show the Assessor's Maps for these?
I know the, I know the maps that I looked at through the town, and the ones that are in our handout here aren't really clear, so...
Mr. Belvin, can you succinctly summarize your question and make it easy for Mr. Cole to answer?
In order to have a manufacturing for marijuana in the North Carver area, you need to have a big enough area for it, okay? And having smaller lots, you're not going to get that availability. I just wanted to ensure that the North Carver Urban Renewal Plan and properties that are up there are included in this. That's what I want to say.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator, through you, this, this bylaw is actually intended to restrict and create an overlay district for the retail purposes. My understanding of the state law is we can't actually restrict the locations for the manufacturing or cultivation, as well as the labs. So that particular use is incidental to this overlay district.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next?
Paul Brunnen, 12 Church Street. I just wanted to point out also, in addition to be a resident of Carver, I am also a recreational marijuana applicant. I'm going for licensing in Plymouth and Kingston, and pending outcome tonight, while I will also be going for licensing in Carver as well. I did want to point out that the state law that says that we can cap it 20%, I believe also says that we must put it to ballot if we're going to reduce below that 20%. That means we have to allow at least two marijuana, not just cap it, we have to allow the two. So based on, on that information, I'd like to point out that in all of this overlay district, all of these properties that have been approved for marijuana, of the 79 properties that are listed, 30 are actually cranberry bog or wetland, which will not be possible to build properties on. That's in Map 20, we got lots 1, 2, 1, 12, 13, 14, and 3. I could list them all, but it's, it's 30 out of 79. Going forward with that, there's also language in the bylaw that is ambiguous on defining where children congregate. If you were to go back and look at the places in this town which fit that criteria of where children congregate, and they would be the dance school and the kids' zone that are on, in the Tractor Supply Strip Mall there, as well as the Little Crusaders Daycare in South Carver, and it also mentions religious facilities, so there's a church in South Carver. When you take all of those into consideration, it limits the number of properties that are possible to put a marijuana establishment to just two. The Dunkin' Donuts in South Carver and Tremont Tire in South Carver. Every single other property is within 500 feet of where children congregate. So based on that, I would like to motion to amend Article 27, Section 5000.5 for the location, to strike the language of subsection C for a library, playground, public park, public beach, religious facility, youth center, similar facility in which minors commonly congregate for a particular purpose, and replace it with simply library, public playground, or youth center. My basis for that is also that because of the experience of what I'm going through right now in Kingston, Kingston has this same language in their zoning bylaws. We are running into lots of legal issues. Town Council is getting involved, the Attorney General is getting involved, and Kingston has now put a freeze on their marijuana licensing pending their town meeting, where they are going to strict, strip that ambiguous language of where children congregate. So I have it in writing here, and I'd like to make that motion.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded.
And, oh, I'm still on yellow, so I would point out, too, that the state law also says that if a town does not ban, they must zone, quote-unquote, reasonably, so as not to create a de facto ban by zoning businesses out of the community.
Sir, the second part down here that's in handwriting, I'm ignoring that?
Yes, I'm sorry, that was, that's, I wasn't sure if I'd make the motion for two separate parts of the same article, but I, there's also language regarding fertilizer that has nothing to do with the location, that I wasn't sure if it was the right form.
So you're going to make that motion after this?
Yes.
Yeah, I will, I totally will, yep. Okay, I'm going to restate the motion, so that everybody is clear on, on what's been made here. So if you turn to Section 5000.5, Location and Dimensional Controls, under this Article 27, there are two... Dimensional Controls, under this Article 27, there are two parts on page 26. We're focusing on Part 2, where it says, "Non-medical marijuana establishments may not be located within 500 feet of the following pre-existing uses." And we are, the motion is focusing on Part C of Item 2, where it says, "Library, playground, public park, public beach, religious facility, youth center, or similar facility in which minors commonly congregate for a particular purpose in a structured and scheduled manner." So the motion is to strike all of Part C and replace it with library, public playground, or youth center. So on this amendment, I'm going to rule this out of order because it is expanding the scope of the article to include additional properties, and we've not notified the town appropriately of that because the article said originally that it was going to include further, all of these restrictions. We're removing some restrictions and possibly adding some properties into this scope of the article.
Mr. Moderator, point of order.
Point of order?
The way he presented it, I feel, is because the notice that we give property owners is the warrant. That's the notice to say, hey, this, this is what's going on in our town. All right? So the notice is the warrant, that we can make changes. And if it says, or any other action relative thereto, at the end of it, the article, then his motion carries water.
Yeah, I'm going to rule against that. We, it, it makes it substantially different, in my opinion, because it is including additional properties, and someone could have looked at the warrant and said, hey, my property's not included in there. Excellent. I'm not going to town meeting. And now, all of a sudden, we're including their property, and, and they're not here to, to address it. So I've ruled. That's, that's all I'm going to say on that.
Okay. Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
What are the additional properties? Because the only properties I listed are properties that are currently listed under Section C. I kept library, playground, and youth center, and I basically just struck out the other listed properties under Section C. Youth center, public playground, and library are all already listed there.
So if this is not including any additional properties, then why would we make the motion?
The, the motion is to not add any additional properties, it's to remove properties that are in there. And the purpose of doing that is because when you remove the language that's ambiguous about where minors congregate, that leaves it way too open to interpretation, similar to recently where we just talked about properties that are nearby. These are, these are open to interpretation. It's causing legal issues in other towns. And it's specifically because of that language that you could interpret a dance school, a private place called Kids' Zone, and that, and those, those places that are in the month, on, in the tractor supply property, by, by virtue of those places being included, it knocks out every single property in the North Carver marijuana overlay district because they are all within 500 feet of those not clearly defined properties.
Mr. Moderator, if I may?
Sure.
Mr. Brennan's comments are well received, and it's true that those businesses do exist in those locations presently. Those are the conditions on the ground right now. They may not be there a year from now, two months from now, six years from now, when we start to receive applicants who are interested in locating in that area. So although it captures the conditions on the ground today, they may not be that way forever. And if any one of those locations or, or businesses were to close, shutter, or relocate, that, of course, now opens up that general district. Furthermore, it doesn't necessarily, this overlay district doesn't guarantee or require that a landowner sell to an interested applicant, or even lease to an interested applicant. It simply says that this is, these are the general vicinity's where they are allowed.
Yep. So I've made my decision on that, so we'll go no further on the amendment. Sir?
I think maybe my comment is moot then. Barry Hanson, 307 Tremont Street. So that amendment is being struck down?
Yes.
So it will continue to state that there is a 500-feet barrier around religious facilities?
Yes.
Is that, is that correct?
Yes, that's mentioned in Part C.
Part C.
Religious facility.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Belbin?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to Town Council. Having ambiguous language like this language, and I understand his point, is that going to hold us up going to the Attorney General's office and getting this passed? I, I just say this because this is our final apple right now to get a bylaw. And I know this has to be voted tonight. If it goes to the Attorney General's office and it gets thrown out, we open up our, our whole town to going everywhere. So I want to make sure that our Ts are crossed, Is are dotted, and there is no ambiguity. So I want Town Council to...
All right, we get the point.
Answer that.
Mr. Corbo.
Thank you through you, Mr. Moderator. Typically, if the Attorney General has concerns about a particular provision, the Attorney General will disapprove only that provision, but allow all the remaining provisions that are not objectionable to remain. So if the, the Attorney General were to find that, that this particular language is insufficient, they would have the option to strike only that language and leave the rest of the bylaw intact.
Thank you, Mr. Corbo.
Matthew Kenison, 9 Center Street. I just have a clarifying question, and then possibly a question or a comment beyond that. So right now, if this isn't in place, if someone had a marijuana business, it would still have to be, if it was retail, it would have to be in a retail-zoned area, whether this was in place or not. If it was agricultural, it would have to be an agricultural place, currently zoned that way. You can't just have an operation out of your house or anything like that, even if this isn't in place, correct?
Mr. Corbo?
Yes, that's correct. Okay. So my, my whole thing with this, and I know I brought this up at prior town meetings, is we've lost out on a lot of tax revenue that we could have gained by having shops in town. As of right now, how the law stands, any private resident with two or more resident, two or more individuals living in the residence can have, I believe, up to 12 plants. I apologize if that's wrong, but, so essentially, there could be plants all over town. Doesn't seem like the hugest deal. My whole thing is, we have a liquor store, you know, right near the church in the center of town. We have a liquor store, you know, up in North Town. We have liquor stores all over the place, and they're able to collect good tax revenue, or they collect revenue, we're able to get the tax revenue off of that. And my concern here is, I just, I don't understand why we're limiting these operations so much. There's already limits on who they can sell to. I don't understand not having the operations there. I mean, in today's current age, you, you can just go online and have this stuff shipped to your house. I think we're losing out on a lot of tax revenue by getting so restrictive on this, and I just, I don't see a purpose to it, to be honest with you.
Thank you, Mr. Kenison. Mr. Allegrini?
Would Chief Dufulley care to give us some updates on traffic? I know he's in contact with the people of Wareham, and they're having some issues down there. Just, just a comment or two from the chief, if we could.
Mr. Dufulley, would you like to comment?
Just being honest. I did not. So obviously, we've seen traffic issues resulting from some of these other places that open up, but I think that's probably going to change as more and more do open. I'm not going to get up here and speak against this. I voted against it. I don't think it's a good idea, but it's coming, and I think we better think about how we're going to address it. And it sounds like we have. I, I don't speak to the gentleman over there with his amendment. I'm not sure that's going to help us out, but it's a decision for you guys to make. I don't, I think there will be issues with traffic, but I think that will get mitigated as more and more of these shops open up across the, across the Commonwealth. So I don't think it'll be, I don't think it's that big of an issue that we should be stopping this tonight, but I think we should just think long and hard. This is a decision we made for the state, and I'm not sure it's going to have the best results along the way as it didn't in Colorado. So that's just my opinion. You're police chiefs.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Moore?
Savery Moore, 12 South Main Street. I just want to point out that through January 28th of this year in the state of Massachusetts, $24 million worth of marijuana sales had been generated, and that generated a tax, if you include the host community agreements, of $1.4 million. If Carver's, if one or two shops in Carver generate $1,500 in, in sales, then that tax money is the $45,000 that we voted on earlier this evening for a police cruiser. So I would suggest that we do whatever we can to make sure that marijuana retail places get as mu, a fair shake as possible in this town. I am not going to ever be using a marijuana retail, but I voted for it in the election in 2016 in order to get the tax revenue that currently Wareham is enjoying, and who knows what's going to happen with Plymouth Pembroke. If everybody here who would use a store like this is traveling to other towns, we're just watching our money go somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. And, and just to clarify, sir, you know, my, my intention is not to prevent you from doing what you need to do, but it's, it's to make sure that people get the proper notice. It's a very sensitive subject. I think people want to know if additional land is being included, or if, if we're changing this in any substantial way. So I would recommend that if you want to in the future, just, you know, get an article on, on a future warrant, or a special town meeting, or something like that. Mr. Belbin, I've already heard from you twice. So...
One, one thing. I just want to...
No, I've, I've already heard from you twice. The, the limits of debate are fairly clear. Someone who I've not heard from twice.
Move the question?
Hi. Bruce Mackey, 9 Thatcher Street. And I'm on the Planning Board. I'd just like to say that if we don't vote on this tonight, then these stores can go anywhere, and we, we have to have something in place. This overlay district can be changed at our next town meeting, if we see that we need to expand it, or change it, or, or put it someplace else. But at least we have, we'll have something in place. We see how this works, and we can expand it later.
Mr. Moderator, if I could, I just want to echo Mr. Mackey's comments. This, this article is not necessarily that you're supportive of retail marijuana sales. As Mr. Mackey says, it does give the town, it gives the Planning Board some level of control as to where they'll be located. And again, you know, just look at it from that perspective, as it does allow you to have a little bit more control in your town. Should it need to be modified at future town meetings, you do have the ability to do that, but without approving something tonight, we have less control.
Thank you. Are you speaking once more?
Yep, once more. Sorry. Paul Brennan, 12 Church Street. Just one more issue, and this actually is not any longer about the, the retail locations. This is under Section 5000 dot 7, I believe, Section L. And I actually did write it on the paper that I handed to the town clerk. It was my second motion.
You gave me 5000 dot 6?
Yeah, that's what it would be. 5000 dot 6, Section, Subsection L. I would motion to strike that entirety, and the reason being that the language where it says that cultivators must use organic fertilizer. As someone who's involved in this industry, I am a master grower. Cultivation is specifically organic means of cultivation. It's my specialty. But when it comes to legal language, the term "organic" is actually a federally regulated term, and the federal government currently does not recognize legal marijuana, and there is no such thing as a quote-unquote "organic fertilizer" that is approved for marijuana cultivation.
So I have a motion to strike 2L under 5000 dot 6. So the motion's been made and seconded, and I've got it in writing here, right? Unless otherwise specified in special permit, marijuana cultivators shall use organic fertilizer. So, so the, is that the new language? Is unless otherwise specified in special permit?
That's the current language, and above that I, I wrote to strike entirely.
Just striking it all out. So we're getting rid of 2L. Any discussion on the amendment to strike 2? Oh, actually, let me just make sure everybody's good with this up here. We can discuss while we're reviewing.
Jen Bogart, 116 Cranberry Road. Middleborough actually has a regulation for the organic practices, and I was actually going to make a motion to add their bylaw to ours, and it states, "Organic practices for adult-use marijuana cultivation are required. Provide narrative of organic pest control being used, as well as detailed information on all chemicals, fertilizers, et cetera, being used within or on the same property."
So this is directly contradictory to the motion, the amendment that we have on the table?
Well, yeah. So I'm, I'm explaining why.
Yep. So we need to dispose of that first, and then, and then we can move on to that amendment.
Oh, no. I wasn't making my motion. I was speaking to the, I, I would disagree with, with getting rid of it because I think a stronger one should probably be added. It was, Middleborough did it. We have a sensitive aquifer, too. So I would say to not get rid of the language.
Okay. I appreciate you clarifying and making it more succinct.
Sure.
Thank you.
Vote on the amendment.
Okay. So we're good on this amendment. Seeing no further motion to the mics, this is going to require a majority vote on the amendment to Article 27 to strike entirely 2L from Section 5000 dot 6, which currently states, "Unless otherwise specified in the special permit, marijuana cultivators shall use organic fertilizer." All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The amendment fails. Moving back to the main motion, Article 27. Do we have any further debate? Seeing no motion to the mics. This requires a two-thirds vote. Recommendation from the board of selection was 5-0. Planning Board was 3-1. All...
I'd like to make a motion.
I've, I've already, I've already moved on to the vote. I'm sorry. All right. I'll allow it.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion similar to what I was saying.
Jesus.
All right. The motion reads, "Organic practices for adult-use marijuana cultivation are required. Provide narrative of organic pest control being used, as well as detailed information on all chemicals, fertilizers, et cetera, being used within or on the same property as a marijuana establishment." That would replace the one sentence of "organic fertilizer should be used." It was inspired by Middleborough. We have a very sensitive aquifer. Any way we can protect our groundwater in case something happens is really important. This strengthens it.
Second.
And like I said, it's from Middleborough's approved bylaw.
Since Sean is busy, are you trying to replace L with this?
Yes.
Okay. Has the motion been seconded?
Yeah.
Okay. I've got a motion made and seconded to replace 5000 dot 6, Part 2L, with the following language, "Organic practices for adult-use marijuana cultivation are required. Provide narrative of organic pest control being used, as well as detailed information on all chemicals, fertilizers, et cetera, being used within or on the same property as a marijuana establishment." Do I have any further discussion?
Yes. Paul Brennan, 12 Church Street. While I do, on a personal level, wholeheartedly agree with the language of this amendment, I'm not sure that it's actually what would best protect specifically an aquifer, and that is because nature makes organic products made by nature. Nature makes some pretty gnarly chemicals in the world, and just because something is labeled "organic" doesn't necessarily mean it's safe for our groundwater. Organic fertilizer is still nitrogen and phosphorus, just like synthetic fertilizer, and excessive nitrogen and phosphorus runoff into the water, whether it's organic or not, is going to have detrimental effects. I think personally, the better way to protect our groundwater is not necessarily to force businesses to adopt organic practices. I mean, God knows that hardly any of the cranberry bogs in this town are, are following organic practices. What would be better would be to implement some sort of... What would be better would be to implement some sort of environmental strategy where all runoff must be completely mitigated into tight tanks, or something of the effect. I know a lot of us are thinking that this marijuana cultivation is going to be big, large outdoor farms, but I'll tell you from our professional experience, almost no marijuana in New England is going to be grown outdoors. We do not have the climate for it, and there are strict lab testing in the state, will not, will likely not pass marijuana that's grown outdoors because of mold and mildew and other such contaminants. The majority of all marijuana will be grown indoors, majoritively grown hydroponically, and therefore the water can be mitigated by the business without ever touching the groundwater. So I don't think that forcing a business to adopt organic practices, especially when not a single other business that operates in town is forced to do so, is the best way to go, especially given my libertarian attitude.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Seeing no additional movements in the mics on the amendment to Article 27, to strike the language in 5,000 dot 6, part 2L, and replace with, "Organic practices for adult-use marijuana cultivation are required. Provide narrative of organic pest control being used, as well as detailed information on all chemicals, fertilizers, et cetera, being used within or on the same property as the marijuana establishment." This requires a majority vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The motion does not carry. Back to the main motion, Article 27. Any additional discussion? Seeing no motion to the mics on the motion to move that the town vote to amend the town of Carver zoning bylaw to regulate use of non-medical marijuana, except, non-medical marijuana is set forth in Article 27 of the warrant. This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries by two-thirds vote. Article 28, Tax on Marijuana. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve Article 28 as printed on the screen.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve Article 28 as printed on the screen. This will require a majority vote when we get there. The recommendation from the Board of Selectmen was 5 to 0, and Finance Committee 4 to 1, and I have a presentation from Mr. Cole.
Hey folks, me again. The state law does provide for the requirement of a host community agreement. On top of that host community agreement, the state does allow for us to tax the sale of marijuana, adult-use marijuana, by 3%. This article before you tonight would impose that 3% tax on all sales of marijuana products.
Jen Douting, 39 William Street. Wow, that's loud. I was just wondering if it's possible to designate how we spend that tax money? If somebody can answer that question.
Mr. Corbo?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. No, no, you cannot. As we previously discussed in a prior article, with a local acceptance statute, you either accept it or you don't.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, on my left.
I'm just curious where the fund, what?
State your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, Matthew Kennison, 9 Center Street. I'm just curious where the funds go into, just in general curiosity.
General fund?
Any, I see no motion to the mics on Article 28, Tax on Marijuana. The motion to move that the town accept the provisions of general laws, Chapter 64 and Section 3, relative tax on marijuana, and set forth in Article 28 of the warrant, requires a majority vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article 21, Carv- sorry, 29. We've made a lot more progress than that, right, folks? Carver's grant program is to support our local nonprofits in aiding the town's population. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve Article 29 as printed on the screen.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve Article 29 as printed on the screen. This will require a majority vote when we get to it, and the recommendation from the Board of Selectmen was 4 to 1, and Finance Committee was 6-0. I have a presentation from Finance Committee Chairman Alan Germain.
I'm going to make this really quick. This has had a lot of contention on Facebook, and I'm really disappointed in that. So you're going to hear the flip side of that coin, I'm sure, before this discussion is over. I'm sorry. This came to us back in November, and what brought it to light, contrary to what you may hear later on, is that the grants, the, the petition articles this year went to $23,000. Last year they were $25,000. The year before that, they were $24,000. The year before that, we had a break, it was $12,000. 2015, they were $22,000, and in 2014, they were $22,000. We jumped through hoops this year to give $41,000 back to the school. And I don't have any problem with $23,000 in requested money this year, although YPAC is withdrawing, and that's a shame. We wanted to come up with a way that would simplify a process, cap, and put a budget amount on a cap, $25,000 is what the committee came up with, and a $5,000 per applicant grant total. This allows the Finance Committee to vet the money. Why do we want to do that? Because we cannot give taxpayer funds to anyone that doesn't benefit back to the town. It runs afoul of the anti-aid amendment, am I correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. I learned a lot about the anti-aid amendment due to, uh, due to an email. Can you put that email up? This is the email in question. This was an email that was sent, that was attempted to make out the town administrator singling out Shane Gives Thanks, and I want to go on the record, I personally have written Shane Gives Thanks a check. I fully support Shane Gives Thanks. I was there recently. I think what they do is a fabulous job, and no matter which way this program goes tonight, if this grant program is approved, Shane Gives Thanks, we're in agreement, they should get their entire amount of $6,000. If the grant program should fail tonight, then this committee will vote in the next article to give Shane Gives Thanks their $6,000. So this, from our committee's standpoint, has nothing to do with Shane Gives Thanks. They became the catalyst for us to look at the numbers and say, "This is growing. How do we, what can we do here?" And then Meg said, "You really can't give taxpayer money unless you get something in return for it," and that's where this email came from. I asked the town administrator, "Can you give me a ruling from town council on how we do this?" Michael sent an email off to Greg that said, and it was right after Shane turned in their application, which was vetted by Lynn, "Can we even use taxpayer funds for a food pantry?" And this is where this came from. I think it's a wonderful program, what they do. I think that what we have set up is a very simple process. It's a 501(c)(3) corporation. You come before the Finance Committee with a simple grant application, "Tell us what you want to do with it. We can ask you a couple of questions." And then the committee, up to 11 people, because that's how many the Finance Committee can be, up to 11 people can vet this, discuss it at an open, public meeting, and then if we approve it, or deny it, you'll all know the reason why, but if we approve it, they come back in the fall, and we get an answer as to, "What did you do with the money?" We don't want, I don't need a certified accounting, but it would be nice to know. It's pretty obvious what Shane Gives Thanks is going to do with their $6,000. I don't think they're planning on a vacation. I think they're going to probably put stuff in that store, and what they do with it is a wonderful thing. But let's suppose for a moment that ABC Charity comes in, and they ask for $5,000, and this body, in its benevolence, grants them that money, and they take it, and 2,000 of it goes to Carver, and the other 3,000 benefits, oh, I don't know, Oxford, England. There is no, we, how do we know? So all we're trying to do is put some transparency into the process, and to make it not more difficult, actually to make it easier, because they don't have to wait for a whole year. The grant program isn't going to have an end date really to it, it's going to have, it'll be an ongoing thing. When we hit the $25,000 for the year, then you're looking at next year. And if the, if the plan comes out successful, why, why couldn't we do some additional fundraising and make it something bigger than it is? Why couldn't Shane Gives Thanks be bigger than they are? What's really, and I said this tonight, what's really great is that they do what they do. What's really sad is that they have to. And that's the shame of it all, honestly and truly. The veterans. Donna said to me today, "How great would it be if we could maybe put in for a grant for $600, $700 so that she could put wreaths on the veterans' graves in Carver?" Does that benefit the residents of Carver? Because I think it does. I think it's a great idea. So these are all things that are, that are coming. It's not the cut and dried. It's not the wait for the 10 signatures on a warrant, and write a pretty paragraph, and, you know, make it sound like, geez, you know, can you really help me out? And we say, "Sure." And then they take the money, and we don't have any idea what they did with it. This can be an ongoing thing, and it can grow, and it can be more supportive from the community, and it can have more oversight, and more transparency. And that's it. So thank you. I'd like you to give this some consideration. Here it comes.
Thank you, Mr. Germain. We'll open it for debate. I don't know who is first. Ms. Ewens?
Thank you. Sarah Ewens, 52 Forest Street. So I just wanted to make a couple of quick points. Whether or not this article passes, the citizens of the town of Carver are allowed by mass general law to petition the town of Carver, the town meeting body, the legislative body, as long as there are voters. So whether or not this passes, these nonprofit organizations can still come to you and ask for whatever they want. I think that, I think the, I think the intent is good here, but I think there's some unintended consequences that are very, very important, and that really bother me. And one of them is that, right now, the Finance Committee, and this is not meant as an insult, this is just factual, they are a recommending authority. They are our advisory committee, and that's a good thing. But if you take away the ability of this town meeting to make a decision as to who we give our money to, you're putting that legislative authority into the Finance Committee. And I know we disagree on that, we agree to disagree, but this is the legislative body, and I think that what it used to happen, and I know they have come before the Board of Selectmen in the past, these groups have to tell us how they spent, is that $5,000 or whatever, being spent on Carver residents? Show us, show us the data. They don't have to tell us who in Carver it's being spent on, but obviously these groups have helped Carver residents in the past, and maybe other groups might come and help Carver residents. So maybe this should be left up to the town meeting voters to ask these groups to come to you and tell you, is that whole $5,000 going to be spent in Carver? Instead of making it the legislative authority of an, of an appointed committee. And just one more quick point, this doesn't, doesn't apply to nonprofits who, who do give back to your town. The anti-aid amendment, sorry, does not apply to nonprofits who do give to your town. So I, I recommend you vote no.
Thank you, Ms. Ewens. Mr. Belbin?
So, I'm one of the one person, I think, here that goes above and beyond dealing with these nonprofits. I've called them, I've talked to them. Don't agree with the phone call that I make, and they don't answer, or they never give me back the information. I've stand, I stood up here, and I've talked to people, everyone in here, about nonprofit organizations, and this way that they're going about it is wrong. It's taking away our right to decide the money that we want to expend. Now, I was going to present a subcommittee by town meeting to actually go in there where we have town meeting members who do that work instead of the Finance Committee, because they would be advisory only to town meeting. But I wasn't allowed to. It's kind of frustrating here, but this, the Finance Committee, do your job there. Let us do our job, let us do the due diligence. I like to hear what these people say. Have them go to the selectmen's meeting, say, "Hey, this is what we do, this is how much we spend here in town, these are how many people we service." Okay? I'll talk about the other nonprofits individually later, but I want you to be aware, this is not the way to go. Okay? There is another way to go. I'll do it next year, to be, create a committee, but there's a lot more things. And the last thing I want to leave is, did the committee do any due diligence this year to contact any of the nonprofits that petitioned to find out what they do and how they do it?
Yes, we did.
Speak into the microphone, Mr. Germain.
I'm sorry?
Speak into the microphone, please.
Yes, we did. We got some information from several of them, more like an advertising brochure. Did we, did they come in and sit down and talk with us? No, they didn't. Would they next year? Yes, they would. So, did we fully vet what happened last year? No, we didn't, because we didn't, we didn't. It wasn't our place to. And unfortunately, there's a part of me that agrees with you, and there's a part of me that obviously disagrees with you. And may I, Mr. Moderator? The part that disagrees is, are you going to have five nonprofit organizations come in here and give all of the town meeting members a dog and pony show as to where the money went last year? And is everybody going to comprehend it? Is everybody going to be able to ask questions about it? Or is it better that an advisory committee, if that's what we apparently are, who discuss and talk about a $10 million budget, now suddenly we're having a difficulty with overseeing $23,000 in grant money? Vet that? And that would be my answer to, to Ms. Ewens. To Bob, if we're, he wants another committee, so he doesn't want this committee to do it, but we should form a new committee, appointed by the moderator, to oversee something. I guess, I guess I'm confused by the new committee, which means you don't trust this committee to do its job. And I take, honest to God, Bob, I take offense at the way that comes across, because that's exactly what it sounds like. We can't do the job, so therefore, Mr. Moderator should appoint a new committee to do the job.
May I respond?
Yeah, you still have time.
But he was, he was talking to it all.
Yeah, I paused it while he was talking.
Okay. So, with that being said, we actually do agree, all right? I'm all for a cap, all right? But I think the committee that I'd like to form here at town meeting for the town meeting members, it's off your plate, it allows them to do it. They can also investigate, hey, should we even be doing this, period? Because that has to be discussed, too. I want the voters to vote for what comes as a petition. That's what I want to see. If we do a committee here next year, all right, it allows those people to talk about it, to discuss it, okay? It's out of your hands. It's in the people's hands. And I just want to make sure that we only vote our money the way we want to vote it, not the way somebody else wants to vote it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Belbin. Ms. Ewens?
Thank you. I, I wanted to point out that I'm, I'm not, sorry, Bob, I'm not in favor of starting a subcommittee of the town meeting. My point still holds. Yes, the Finance Committee, in its advisory capacity, advises town meeting on the budget, but the Finance Committee doesn't approve the budget all by itself. And that's my point. This body is the legislative body, and those decisions should be made by these people, not by you, or by the Board of Selectmen, or anybody else. School Committee advises the town on their budget. They don't, they don't vote, the town votes it. And that's, that's what I'm hoping people will do, is just keep it so the town meeting members keep their authority as the legislative body.
May I, Mr. Moderator? One more second?
Sure.
Just to rebut. Ms. Ewens is absolutely correct, but there was a million dollars in a capital outlay account that the capital outlay chairman, committee, and the Finance Committee got together and took $395,000 of that money in their vote among seven people, and gave it to the fire department to buy much-needed PPE gear and equipment. Now, that money was there because this body voted that in. You, you put that money in and then gave these two committees the oversight for that. We have $150,000 sitting in account that Finance oversees, that you've already approved, that if somebody should run short or something unique should come up, they'll come before the Finance Committee. And depending if we have a quorum, which is four people, we can vote to have it approved, and Meg can write that check. We have a hard enough time trying to fill a committee. We have 11 people can sit on this committee, we have five. And depending upon how the, the election comes out, we actually have six, but we're booting John, because he's retiring, and, and we're not sure of the election outcome. We could be down to four, we have one brand-new member, that's going to be five. So, you know, if there are people in this room that want to get involved in this, by all means, come on in. But you've already given the Finance Committee and the Capital Outlay Committee a tremendous amount of responsibility, and we don't take any of that lightly. So this, this committee would be, this Town Meeting would be giving us the authority to oversee the other $25,000. You get a full report next year, and if you don't like what we did with it, take a motion and take it away. I don't think we'd ever let you down, though. That's it, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Germaine. Yep. Seeing no additional motion to the mics on Article 29, to approve Article 29 as shown on the screen, this requires a majority vote, and recommendation from the Board of Selectmen was four to one, Finance Committee was six to zero. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries by majority vote. Moving on to Article 30, money petition articles, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve Article 30 is printed on the screen.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve Article 30 as printed on the screen. I have a presentation by, I have a presentation by Alan Germaine.
Real quick, this is all that's going to happen with Article 30. We would ask that you vote no. Everything in Article 30 will be grant-approved. So you can vote yes, and we're going to write them the check. You can vote no, and we're still going to write them the check, but we're going to vet it, and they're going to come back and tell us what they did with the money. If you vote to give them the money this year, then our grant, which you just approved in the last one, will not start till the following year. So we can either do it this year and vet it. We have made the adjustment that Shane Gives Thanks will get the $6,000.
Oh, okay.
Even though we have a $5,000 cap, we made that adjustment for this year because we really, truly believe they deserve it. So that's where we're at with that. We would ask that you turn down Article 30, and everything in Article 30 will be funded through the grant program.
That's it.
Just, just to be clear, and we'll get to you, Ms. Belvin, don't worry, just to be clear, the language, I'm going to, I'm going to read this motion, just so everybody knows. The language in this is, "I move that the town raise and appropriate the total sum of $18,000 as grants for the purposes and the amounts specified in paragraphs B through E of Article 31 of the warrant, and that paragraph A of Article 30 be dismissed." So, so it's just A. Yeah. So just so everybody's clear, we would be approving B, C, D, and E, but dismissing Article 30A.
That's at their request.
It says Article 30, paragraph B and E of Article 30.
That is correct.
But it doesn't say that on the screen?
That does not, but he's correct.
Oh.
That should say Article 30.
So the motion was to approve as written on the screen, so should we make an amendment to?
I think it's a script, you just write.
Okay. So we're going to, we're going to just correct it in the minutes? Okay? Unless anybody objects?
It's in the warrant that I turned.
Yep. Mr. Belvin?
Last time to speak. All right. So Social Community Action Council always gets back to me and everything. I didn't call them this year, because they always get back to me and give me all the information. I know what they do, I see what they do, I know they help so many senior citizens and low-income, so I really have no problem with that. And I was actually the one that said we should give them more one year, and they, up to $5,000. I have an issue with the second one here, South Coastal.
Mr. Belvin, can we, can we save people a lot of time here? The, the presentation by Mr. Germaine basically stated that, that these organizations will get, be getting the money either way.
I understand, and I have an issue with that.
But we already voted the previous article, which will allow them to give them the money.
I have information on the second one there, South Coastal County Legal Services. They are closed on Fridays. I try to call them, and I just get the runaround of, push this button, push that button, and it never gets to a person. I call the other numbers that are there for the Cape and Down and Fall River, and again, it gets nothing.
Mr. Belvin, at this point, this would have to be referred to the Finance Committee, so you would have to.
This is important, though.
I understand.
Point of order, if I may, Bob, please, we, we shoot me that stuff, because that's the whole purpose of a grant program. Do you understand? So if there's an issue with them and something wrong with it, then we're in a position now to be able to deal with it.
Mr. Germaine, that's not a point of order. Point of order is procedural. So we're not going to have a back-and-forth conversation.
So just give me two more minutes. I mean, let my thing go through.
It's benign, it has, has no bearing on the conversation, so.
Well, it does, I'm trying to get them to sit down.
Yeah, I am, too. So.
I'm trying to get them to sit down and say goodnight.
Honestly, Mr. Belvin, there's nothing more that we can do here in this assembly to, to address your concerns. Those concerns would now have to go to the Finance Committee due to the previous vote.
I understand that. But they also, people need to know that Social Resource and Advocacy, they got back to me, they talked to me, they were awesome. And Shane Gives Thanks, I'm all for them. Thank you.
Seeing no further motion to the mics on Article 30, money petition articles, with the changes that we previously mentioned, "I move that the town raise an appropriate total sum of $18,000 as grants for the purposes and the amounts specified in paragraphs B through E of Article 30 of the warrant, and that paragraph A of Article 30 be dismissed." This requires a majority vote. Vote from the Board of Selectmen was four to one, Finance Committee five to zero. All those in favor?
That was vote for no action.
To no action. Those two board votes were to take no action.
Oh, I'm sorry. So the two board votes were to take no action. Thank you.
So the vote is to take no action.
No, your, your vote was to take no action, right? Your, your recommendation was vote to take no action.
That's correct, and the board is.
Right. So it's, the purpose is to delay, the end result, no action.
Mr. Moderator, I have a motion that we take no action on these articles.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion made, do we have a second?
Second.
So we have a motion, basically amendment, amendment made.
Maybe a friendly one to not have to write it out? Or do you want me to write it out?
Let's write it out. Yeah.
No.
Just have people vote no.
Okay. It's, it's. I can't imagine why we'd want to debate that.
Okay. You have the. We have a motion to take no action on Article 30. This is most comparable to a motion to postpone the article indefinitely, so that would require a majority vote. So the motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Belvin, do you want to discuss your motion any further?
No.
Okay. Do we have any other further debate? So on the motion to take no action on Article 30, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously. We have disposed of Article 30. Article 31, here we go, folks. On Article 31, to amend Council on Aging bylaw, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve Article 31 as printed on the screen.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve Article 31 as printed on the screen. I have a presentation from Ms. Colleen Preston.
Last one, last one. This is what they call in my line of work, aging in place.
I have some changes here to the bylaws. Our board has completely reorganized recently, and we started going back through some of the paperwork, and bylaws was our, was our first stop. So we're just catching up. The first change, there's nothing really drastic here. The first change involves the wording and the, a couple of obsolete terms in here. The Council on Aging operates in cooperation with programs of the Commission on Aging. That no longer exists, that's the state organization, that is now called Massachusetts Executive Office of Elder Affairs. So that's that change. And the referenced law there, Massachusetts General Law, can't quite read it, Sixth Section 73, that was obsolete several decades ago. It has been replaced by Chapter 40, Section 8B. So that's just sort of a housekeeping change, not much to it. The 4.4.2, "The town administrator shall appoint a council on aging board consisting of five members and two alternates." Currently, we have seven members, no alternates. This'll just make it a little bit easier to get a quorum and to have enough people on the board. We'll still have seven voices heard, but we'll, it'll just make us more efficient, a little bit more nimble. This goes into, I won't read the whole thing, goes into how the, how these get appointed. They will be, 4.4.3 is just on the organization of the, of the board. Alternate members shall be appointed for three-year terms. Chair or vice-chair may designate an alternate to sit in on the council and participate as a full member in the case of the absence of someone else. The other change here is that the, the town administrator currently appoints a council on aging, and in the change, the town administrator will appoint after consulting with the chair of the board or vice-chair in the absence of the chair. So those are the only changes, nothing really dramatic.
Colleen, question?
That's it. Yep, I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Preston. Do we have any further discussion? Mr. Shea?
It'll be quick. I would like to make a motion to change consisting of five members to up to seven members. It'll give more people a chance to participate. We have a large senior population in this town. Thank you.
That eliminate the alternates? Is that what you're saying? Would you eliminate the alternates?
No, that the board could consist of up to seven members, depending on how many volunteers, but not limited to. We're changing the language from "shall consist of seven" to.
I think you're, I think you're going against Ms. Preston's wishes here, so I think she's trying to reduce it down to five from seven.
Right, but I'm giving them the option to bring it up to seven, should the necessity or more people.
That's where they're at now.
Pardon?
That's where they're at now.
They must be seven right now.
No.
It shall consist of seven, and we're changing it to five, and I'm just asking to change the words to "up to seven." You can still have five members, but there's a lot of seniors in this town, and a lot of people might want to participate in this particular council. Thank you.
Okay.
I just knew it was your turn.
Mr. Corbo?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Moderator. So you can't have a, a board or a committee that consists of up to a certain amount of members, because you wouldn't be able to calculate a quorum. A board or a committee has to have a certain amount of members, so that you know how many people have to be there in order to have a quorum.
Right, but currently, there could be five members on the committee, or there could be 11 members on the committee. Is that correct?
No, no, currently.
Well, what about the Finance Committee? How many members are there on there?
Four.
And how many can they hold?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Hey, it doesn't matter how many seats are filled. If it's a five-member committee, a quorum is three. Okay? If it's an 11-member committee, a quorum is six. You can calculate it. If you say "up to," it's a rolling number, you can't calculate a quorum. So in my opinion, it is not lawful to have a committee consisting of up to a certain number.
Okay, point taken. Thank you, I rescind my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Any additional discussion on the motion to move that the town amend Town of Carver Council on Aging bylaws is set forth in the, in Article 31 of the warrant? It requires a majority vote. The recommendation from the Board of Selectmen is five to zero. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The motion passes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, do we have a second? Motion made a second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. I sincerely appreciate everyone's.
Drive careful, don't smash into each other going out of here in a hurry.